Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the committee of hold meeting for January 8th misspoke. Would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Pelley Van Ooglu?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Eight members present.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are to the minutes of the January 3rd meeting. Vice President Hussein?
Sure, I would move the meeting minutes from January 3rd as presented.
Okay, we got a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Okay, we are to public comment on agenda items. If you would like to address council, please come down to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have up to three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Alan Fox, Ingham County Treasurer, and wanted to speak to you on Agenda Item 6D, the Ingham County Treasurer's Payment Reduction Program. I also wanted first to congratulate the new members of the council, the new leadership of the council, and say how much I look forward in all of my different capacities, Treasurer, Housing Trust Fund, and Land Bank, working with the city council, working with the city administration to improve the quality and availability of housing here in Lansing.
Excuse me, Mr. Fox?
Yeah.
I'm gonna call you down to the well when we get to you if you wanted to wait.
Okay.
I mean, you're more than welcome to continue if you'd like, but I'm just gonna-
I appreciate that, and in that case, I'm glad I got the first part in to-
(laughing)
-as a welcome, and I'll talk then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else out there for public comment? Do we have anybody else out for public comment? Okay, see and no, we'll move on. Okay, we are to, uh, let's see, we are to our presentation for the Office of Financial Empowerment, Lansing Save, First Capital Campaign. If Ms. Paxton would please come down to the well for her presentation? Thank you. What we'll do, Ms. Paxton, is let you get through your, we'll try to let you get through your presentation, and then we'll open it up for questions.
All right, thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm Amber Paxton. I'm the Director of the Office of Financial Empowerment at the city, which is part of the Department of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement. And to the councilmembers I haven't met yet, congratulations, and I look forward to working with you. We are excited to give you a quick update tonight. It's all good news, I promise, and we just wanted to give you information about what's going on with the Lansing Save program that you might share it with your constituents. So Lansing Save is a program that's called a CSA or Children's Savings Account, and it's a nationwide program now, but we were one of the first to have one. And what we do is we open a post-secondary education savings account for every Lansing School District child when they enroll in kindergarten, or if they weren't with us in kindergarten, they enroll later on. We catch them when they come in. So we enroll a new class every year that includes anyone that wasn't there the year before. And so we started doing that in November of 2014, and so our first kindergarten class is in ninth grade this year. So I'm gonna, did you all get a slideshow? Okay. I'm gonna get through the, I got 10 minutes, I'm gonna check the time. Okay, and I'll be quick. All right, so for those who don't know about Lansing Save, just to give you a quick primer, MSU-FCU, the Lansing School District, and the City of Lansing signed an MOU for 49 years of work together, so we had a real serious commitment about this program. We did that in 2014. And we did a four-year rollout, so that first year we had 500 kids, and then we did it until we had gotten all of the kids in the kindergarten classes. And then as we got to fourth grade, we backfilled. So anybody that had gotten missed in the four-year rollout got backfilled at fourth grade. That also gives us an opportunity to study what the difference is between kids who got kindergarten, kids who got fourth grade. But now everyone gets it, no matter what, and we're K through nine. Those three partners, us, MSU-FCU, and the school district, we have met monthly since 2015. We also have as part of those meetings Lansing Promise, Capital Area College Access Network, other partners that come to the table so that we can all work together for the goals for the kids. So, we launched in 2015. We were very early adopters in this movement. In 2016, there were only 316,000 of these accounts nationwide, and 1,500 were in Lansing. Now there are over 7,500 accounts in Lansing and nearly 5 million in the country with 128 programs in 38 states. And so, real quick about the account structure, for those of you who are nerdy like me about this type of thing. It is actually a certificate of deposit. It is a one-year certificate that auto-renews every year. We get better returns on that because it's dividends rather than interest. It is opt-out, not opt-in, which is a national best practice because there's no action needed by the parent to open the account. We open it with their student ID number rather than their social security number, and it is all held under one master account, like an umbrella account over all the others, which is in the city's name, so that the parents are not paying taxes. At least not until they cash out. It is seeded with the first $5 by MSU-FCU, so when the child's account is opened, it has $5 in it automatically, and is restricted for approved educational expenses after high school. That does not have to be for a degree. So we do certificate programs, any post-secondary pursuit that they want to pursue. It is combined with financial education, so MSU-FCU has four full-time financial educators. We don't pay for those. They put those, give that to the program in kind, and those educators go into every single classroom monthly between December and May. And so for six months out of the year, they visit, they do a 20-minute financial education lesson, and they take deposits. And it is the cutest thing you have ever seen, and if you have the time to tag along sometime, I'd love to set that up for you, because I have been the one issuing the receipts to the kids for their 12-cent deposit, and truly, it's amazing. And so each of those CDs also has three sub-accounts. The seed account with the $5, the private dollars, which is anything their family puts in, and then the philanthropic dollars that we put in. The reason for that is if they leave the district and they don't use the money that, you know, they leave the district so they don't any longer have an active account with us, they, their money is still given back to them, but the money that we put in philanthropically is not. It goes back into the program for all the other students. I mentioned that we open with a student ID number, not a social security number. That means that no asset limit problems are happening with, you know, so if they are on cash assistance, and no citizenship concerns as well. Okay. So the, I'm gonna go really quickly through the mission, vision, impact, need part, which is to say, I think the mission and vision are pretty obvious. I'll let you read those in your slides, but what I want to focus on is impact and need. The impact is that we, there's been national studies done on this, and students from a low to moderate income family who have an account with $500 in it that is earmarked for education and they know about it are five times more likely to complete their degree or certificate. And just by having the account, regardless of how much is in it, they are three times more likely to pursue post-secondary. That is the research that made us open this program. Then there's the need. The need is that 3 million people in the country every year drop out over a financial emergency of $500 or less, drop out of post-secondary. And so when we see this, that $500 makes them this much more likely to go to some post-secondary education and to complete it, and that $500 seems to be the magic number that causes these dropouts, then we decided, okay, we've gotta get to $500 per account before they graduate, no matter what. But when we decided to do that, our average balance was $14.90. Okay? So, I was on a bus with, checking my time, I was on a bus with a gentleman named Munir Cartra Ramos, who recently visited here in Lansing, actually, and he has my job in St. Paul, Minnesota. And they raised $13 million for their children's savings account. And theirs are opened at birth. And so we're on a subway in New York, and I say, "Munir, how did you do this?" And he said, "You need to go back to Lansing. You need to find out who is the best fundraiser in your city." And so I come back, and I'm asking everybody, political candidates and other department heads and things, and everyone kept coming back with Capital Fundraising Associates, which is how I ended up here, because President Garza was talking to Rebecca, and she was asking if we could do a presentation. So Rebecca Bahar Cook, who owns Capital Fundraising Associates, has raised $197,000 for us since the 5th of April. And it would be double that if I had more staff time, because this is not a plea for more staff. But she gives me a to-do list every Friday, and then the following Friday, I say, "Well, I got two of these 10 things done." And she'll say, "Okay, here's a couple more. See you next week." And so this, the slide that's got the picture, the scaffolding on it, we had that $15 average balance. We knew we needed to get to a $500 balance by graduation, and we set an immediate goal of $50 per account. But the scaffolding, what that is supposed to be a vision of is that we are providing ways for the community to invest in the students. So one of the ways that we've done that in the past, it was actually the idea of Bethlehem Lutheran Church, that they would adopt the students in their neighborhood. So we drew a circle around their church. There was about 140 kids, and they started raising money for those kids. Anytime there were five Sundays in a month, they would pass the plate again. They have raised over $17,000 for the 140 kids in their neighborhood for post-secondary. So we're providing a way for people to directly invest, and every single penny that is invested in Lansing Save goes to the student accounts. We don't use any of it for overhead, because that's where general fund comes in, is the overhead. So, how do we get from 15 to 500 and first to 50? We were looking first at like, what are, where are the other programs? Kindergarten to college is the program in San Francisco. We modeled our program after theirs, and so we called them up. Their first cohort graduated last May. And we said, "What was your average balance at graduation?" And it was $1,000. $1,046, to be exact. And then college-bound St. Paul, that Munir oversees, is at $126 average balance right now, and they enrolled them at birth, and they are now zero to three years old. And so we started talking to those folks, like, you know, "How did you do that?", but also talking to Rebecca, and she put together a great plan. We have now raised enough, I had here $25.63. It goes up almost every day. So we're at $26.23 we'll be adding to every account now, but we also had 60,000 we had raised previously that we didn't want to disperse until we knew we could do it, kind of, you know, we didn't want to do it with one class and not be able to do it with the class that followed, if that makes sense. So now that we're getting to that point, we're also gonna put that 60,000 in, and that will bring us to a total balance of 4917. So that initial goal of $50 per account, I need to raise 6,200 more dollars. So that's where we're at on that. Wanted to speak really quickly of the Bold Lansing Program, it's not a program, the Bold Lansing Continuum of Supports. I mentioned that we've been getting together for years now with Promise and CapCan and the school district and the credit union, and we all get together monthly, and we talk about our goals and how we can help the students. And we decided to formalize that. We did some work, it was called What Work Studies, so some of you heard about that a lot, because it was a two-year grant that we got from Bloomberg Philanthropies. And we used that grant to formalize this Bold Lansing Continuum of Supports. And so what we envision here is that the students, we take them, we take the child's hand at kindergarten with the Lansing Save program. In the fifth grade, they watch the sixth graders take the Promise Pledge. In the sixth grade, they take the Promise Pledge. In the ninth grade, they get a Capital Area College Access Network Advisor. In the 11th and 12th grade, they start to apply for their Promise Scholarship. And when they turn 18, they get free financial counseling through our office, through the Financial Empowerment Center. So what that means is that this community has a way to take that child's hand at kindergarten and hold it until they retire. And so we think that's really powerful. But not as powerful as it can be, because right now it's more a theoretical system of supports, and we are working to find more ways for Lansing Save and the FEC to work with our partners to really have families feel it that way, you know, feel it as one big system instead of a bunch of programs. Just gonna touch on super quickly, Festival of Trees this year donated half their proceeds to the Lansing Save program, and they want to continue doing that going forward. The For Good Foundation, which is the foundation established by Ben Rathbun from Rathbun Insurance and Lilian from Elderly Instruments, they had their gala on December 30th. We are one of the beneficiaries of that. We don't know the amount yet, but it was a beautiful event. And then Scrap Fest has announced that we will be one of two nonprofit beneficiaries for their event this year. All of that coming from Rebecca doing these wonderful presentations and taking us out in the community. And then Calvin Jones at Board of Water and Light is going to chair a committee to have the first-ever Mayor's Golf Classic, starting in September of '24, benefiting the Lansing Save program. So as you can see, we're building sustainability in a way that we're kind of building a fundraising machine that will continue to support the program in perpetuity. That is the end of the update. I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you, Paxton. I appreciate you being down here. It was very well, very well-conducted presentation. I do have Councilman Brown, do we have any other council comments, questions? Okay, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza, and thank you so much for being here, Amber. What a thorough presentation. I have been familiar with the program. There's been a lot of community outreach in the neighborhood groups, and one of those presentations included, were from Robin.
Mm-hmm.
And she was explaining about some type of partnership, I believe, with Kroger's.
Yes.
So if you could share that with, I thought it was phenomenal, and if you could-
Thank you.
-share that, you know, with us in this audience, as well as the viewers at home.
I'm so glad you brought that up. Thank you. The Kroger Rewards Program, you can go onto the Kroger website, and you go to the Community Rewards section, and there's a place where you can enter the program that you want to support. And for Lansing Save, it's the Desk Drawer Fund, which is the foundation arm of MSU-FCU. So if you go to the Community Rewards section, and you, and you put that Desk Drawer Fund in there and connect your card to it, we get 1% of grocery spend, so I never shop anywhere at Kroger, anywhere but Kroger anymore, because 1% of all of my grocery spend goes directly into the Save program. Right now, there's only about 90 connected cards, raising about $200 per quarter, so please spread the word on that. We're gonna be doing more to do outreach on that program this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Great information. So, any other questions? Okay, Councilman Hussein, Vice President Hussein.
We certainly appreciate you being here and the success of the program. I mean, that's exciting. I guess I was kind of going through your presentation, the Community Champions piece, it seems like those groups are, are they exclusively faith-based?
So far, but they don't need to be.
I was just gonna ask, so we could potentially expand the program?
Absolutely. And we, you know, one of the things that we're working on right now is, and I have this for most of the neighborhoods, we're figuring out for a neighborhood, what's the average balance, what's the number of students, et cetera, so that we can present that information to the groups. Because we were talking about, like, you can take a neighborhood, and you could ask every restaurant, every retail store, you know, you could ask all of the organizations in that community if they want to give to that specific neighborhood. I think it could be really powerful.
Yeah, I think so too. And I think of, you know, whether it be organized neighborhood groups, I think of groups like the Southwest Action Group-
Yeah.
...et cetera, so that, you know, that's the question. The other piece is, so what does the relationship with MSU-FCU look like for these kids post-high school? Do they have like a bona fide relationship in place where they can open up a checking account, savings account, and what's that look like?
I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up, because we know that about 10% of Lansing is completely unbanked. They have no relationship with the financial institution whatsoever. And we work on that with our Financial Empowerment Center. It's like, banking is number one before we get, do anything else with them, is get them a bank relationship. And even though the FDIC will tell you it's 10 or 11% in Lansing, the FEC, the Financial Empowerment Center, our clients, almost 40% are unbanked. And so for so many families, this is the first financial institution they will have an account with, and it's so important that it be a positive experience, right? We get one chance. And so they are really, they pave the way for that, but they also don't sell. So, you know, we don't send anything to families that isn't approved by the school district, and so we wouldn't be sending them something like, "Open this account and get this thing." So, but what we hope is that we're building that trust in the financial institution that will later become a deeper, deeper relationship.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't see any further questions from council. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Discussion Item C, Resolution to Appoint Heath Lowery, Board of Zoning Appeals, term to expire June 30, 2026. Heath Lowery, if you could please come down to the well? All right, thank you, sir. When you get down there, make sure your mic is on, the light will bright, turn green, bright green. And this is an opportunity for you to tell us about yourself, why you're uniquely qualified for this position, and then we'll open up to our council comments.
Yes, good evening. As was stated, my name is Heath Lowery. I'm very excited for this opportunity to be possibly appointed to this board. I find zoning a very impactful area of city governance, particularly in the, in the quality of life for both residents and businesses. And I believe wholeheartedly that I'm able to fulfill the duties that are laid out in the Lansing Code of Ordinances for this board. I'm an attorney. As part of my day job, I work for the Michigan Coalition to End Domestic and Sexual Violence. But during my time in law school, I studied indigenous law and policy, and part of that policy aspect of it was understanding the relationship between land use and the quality of life for residents of an area. And I'm very passionate about this, and I think that I could serve very well in this capacity.
Sorry. Much appreciated. Do we have any questions? Okay, Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. I looked over your application and definitely qualified. Appreciate you stepping forward for this. The only question I would have is, I think you're running for Charter Commission as well, because you're not gonna be able to serve on both.
Yes, and I'm looking to serve the city in whatever capacity. The Charter Commission, that became an opportunity after I initially submitted my application for this position. If I'm elected to that position, I would resign from the board, as would, because I feel like the calling for that commission would be the higher calling in the situation.
I think, I think the only concern I would have is, if we put someone on for three months, we'd have to do it all over again if he is elected to the Charter Commission. So that would be my only hesitancy with this.
Thank you, Councilman Cost. I guess, I just want to respond real quick to that. I'm not sure, I know some of the boards and commissions have had a hard time meeting quorum, and I'm not sure if that's the case. If you were to be appointed, you would probably have roughly five meetings or so that you'd be able to do. I'm just playing like devil's advocate here a little bit, but I appreciate you being here, and I'll move on to other council comments. Somebody else have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to Jackson. Jackson's here.
Thank you. It's not so much a question, I just wanted to support your volunteerism to run for this board, especially when you do have that background that sounds like it's very specific to the work that's gonna be done. And also, it's your first choice, and a lot of times with, you know, boards that aren't as popular, it's usually not people's first choice. So between that, also your work volunteering with the West Side as well, you'll have my support, so I look forward to the work you do. And as far as the commission, I don't think that we should necessarily consider it, but anybody can consider anything, and we'll see what happens with that.
Thank you, Councilman Hussein. Vice President Hussein.
Kind of along in the same vein, I guess, as Councilman Cost. My question is more, if you don't happen to be successful, you do plan on staying on the BZA, correct?
100%.
Yeah, and Heath, this is, I want you to understand, this isn't directed at you. I just, what I don't want to see during this period of time is us appoint a bunch of people that want to use it as part of their campaign to be elected, and then they all, they all jump off if they're not successful, which I don't think that's the case with you.
No, this application was put in long before-
Right, right. I mean, even going through your resume, yeah, you actually, you submitted yours in May of 2023, and then you didn't even apply for this until December 1st of 2023. Yeah. The other piece is, you know, speaking to the quorum piece, I think Councilman Cost started the precedent last year, and I thought it was an excellent precedent to set. We are having a really, really difficult time with quorum in terms of these boards and commissions. And contrary to what some people believe, I mean, these are incredibly important boards and commissions. As a matter of fact, a number of us got our start on those boards and commissions. And we also lean on recommendations and things of that nature. This particular board, my understanding, meets the second Thursday of every month at the NEC, right?
Yes.
6:30 PM. That's not a conflict with you and your-
Not at all.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I do truly believe in being a public servant, and that means actually doing what I'm promising to do, so.
Great. Is there any more questions by councilmembers? Okay, follow-up with Cost?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to clarify. I strongly support you in this role, and your resume is great. I just, I thought maybe there was some confusion there. I am absolutely elated that you want to go on to one of these boards that are very important, and they're not always the sexiest board to serve on. I don't know what other word to use there, so.
All right, well, thank you, Councilman Cost. And I guess I would just like to say, I really appreciate your willingness to serve the community. Thank you very much. I know it's a tough duty, and like, Vice President Hussein says, yeah, we've been having hard times making those quorums, so much appreciated, sir. And with that, Vice President Hussein, promotion.
Sure, I would move the resolution of appointment to Heath Lowery to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and this is for a term to expire June 30 of 2026. And if approved here, I do believe this is our final consideration for tonight.
Okay, any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passed.
Thank you all.
Mr. Lowery, will you be here tonight for appointment, if at all possible?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on, the discussion action item, we have Resolution, Participation in the Ingham County Treasury Payment Reduction Program. Mr. Alan Fox, if you'd please come down to the well? Thank you for being here. Make sure your green light is on, and feel free to start your presentation whenever you're ready.
Thank you, President Garza. My apologies on the procedure earlier today. When I speak to the county Board of Commissioners, they make me do it at public comment, so I'm very happy to have the opportunity to do it this way. I don't think I'll suggest that to them. They don't take suggestions from the countywide electeds very, very well. That's a different story. I'm here today, we're reaching the end of the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund program, which was a wonderful policy that the state, where the state of Michigan used federal coronavirus relief money to assist homeowners that were struggling due to lost income and increased cost during the COVID emergency. And one of the great things about that program was that the state of Michigan and the federal government recognized that for many homeowners, the coronavirus crisis magnified already existing difficulties. They didn't restrict the funds to costs that were incurred just after that magic date in March when, when the world changed. In Ingham County, we did something that was not done in any other county, and that is that instead of just sending out some flyers and telling people they could apply online, we brought the program to people in the community. We had a dozen different sessions where people could meet with counselors, get help starting their applications, get appointments to continue the application and to get other financial assistance. We teamed with Capital Area Housing Partnership. We also worked with Michigan State University Extension. And the result of that in the City of Lansing was that about 340 families received over $2.25 million in delinquent and current-year property tax payments from the state of Michigan. There were other eligible expenses, and we estimate, we don't have the exact numbers, but an estimate of $3 to $4 million in other assistance with unpaid utility, insurance, mortgage bills, other costs related to homeownership. Besides the families helped in the City of Lansing, there were another $900,000 in tax payments for about 115 families elsewhere in the county. Program was a great success here. One of the measures of that is, in the 2024 foreclosure cycle, we're gonna have eligible for foreclosure property with delinquent 2021 taxes. We have a record-low number of properties that are in that situation now. We're still more than two months away from the deadline to make payments to avoid foreclosure. Very few of those, of those properties are owner-occupied homes. We're talking about rental houses, some commercial property, various other issues where the status is unclear. other issues where the status is unclear. But that money's running out. It, it has run out. We, we, we have a few applications that are still in the pipeline, and, and there's nothing good that replaces it. There are a few things we can do locally that involve county money that comes to the county through the delinquent tax payment system. And, and none of them are as comprehensive as, as that. But we're still going to do as much as we can to help homeowners in the community that need assistance with taxes. We're going to announce some plans later. We haven't finalized the details of how to make it work. That'll be directed at those homeowners who are receiving counseling, making small or, or medium-sized regular payments, treading water but not catching up. And, and the treading water is better than drowning, but we're going to try to give them the extra push so that they get caught up. And there, and there are a number of families in that situation. There's another option that's available to the county, and this can only be taken with the consent of the cities and townships in the, in which property is located, and that's why I'm here. We, we've designed this so that there's no cost to the city, no cost to the school district, no cost to other taxing authorities, but, but the statute still requires that consent from, from the local government. And that is to tie certain parts of property tax relief to, to the poverty exemption. I think the City of Lansing has 50 to 60 properties that have poverty exemptions. Bulk of those have had exemptions for some time, and so there are no past due delinquent taxes incurring fees. But what happens is that as we engage in financial counseling, as we find families that have not received assistance in the past, often we find them because they're two or three years in the hole. They are eligible for poverty exemption. They haven't applied for it. When, when we're able to get them that poverty exemption, we still have those two or three years of delinquent taxes that are due to the county. And, and we, we can't take the taxes off without forcing the local government to pay the, the difference. But I can take the fees and interest off of the county charges that are not due to, to the taxing authorities, and that's what we're trying to do here. It, it's, it's one piece of, of some larger efforts. It is the one piece that requires the, the consent of the, the council, and, and that's why I'm here to, to ask for your support to do. The, the statute is written that way because there is the option to do that, to take the taxes off and force the city to pay the, the past taxes back to the Delinquent Tax Revolving Fund. But, but there are three different pieces, and they are, they have or between them. And so because it's an or, we only have to pick the third one, which is the, the county-assessed interest and fees. That's as far as we're going to go, so that we're not engaged in, in taking tax dollars away from schools, the city, and the library, and, and the other institutions. But we still need your, your, your resolution to, to do that. The resolution has to be enacted within three weeks of the date that this was announced, which was January 5th. And, and we scheduled the, the announcement on January 5th after talking with government bodies throughout the county, all, all 21 that, that need to act, to be sure that everybody had at least one meeting in, in the 21-day period following that. And we'd like to obviously be able to get this in place and, and, and help out those people who are in that situation. Be happy to take any questions or, or talk about any of the other things we're doing if, if, if you'd like. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. Do we have any questions or concerns or comments from the council? Vice President Hussein.
No, yeah, I think I heard you. I just want to make sure. You said all interest, penalties, and fees that are eligible for this program are specific to the county, correct?
They, they are delinquent tax, interest, penalties, and fees. So yes, they, they are charged by the county and due to the county. They are not what we call the base tax, which is what was turned delinquent by the city in the first place. The, the, the base tax is, is not covered by this. That is an option under the statute, and we've chosen not to do that. As I read the statute, if we wanted to do that, this resolution wouldn't let us do that without coming back to the, the, the city. And, and it's just not something I, I think we need to do or ought to do.
Okay, any, any more comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. Vice President Hussein.
I would move the resolution of participation in the Ingham County Treasury Payment Reduction Program.
Okay, we got a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on down for discussion action item E, resolution to special outside legal counsel specific to Case Fitzpatrick versus City of Lansing, case number 23, Joseph Seward of Seward Henderson, P L L C. Mr. Brett Koschinski? Oh, I'm sorry. I got this mixed up. Okay, Jim, Jim, are you able to speak on this?
Because an individual employee of the city has been sued also, our office has a conflict of interest. We represent the city. The insurance company has requested that Mr. Seward represent the individual, and this request came, comes from the insurance company. You, you have to approve all outside counsel per the charter, and that's what this resolution is all about. So this is covered by insurance.
Do we have any questions or concerns, comments? Okay, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I heard that right. So who's the two parties again, that, and which one needed the outside?
There is a, there is a code officer that is a defendant also, in addition to the city. It's an unlawful search and seizure reclaim from the plaintiff here. And so we're, we have an insurance through Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. They have to appoint counsel. They're requesting that, they want to appoint Mr. Seward, but we have to have him approved by this body.
Okay, so we're still on the hook for both the city and the individual?
Well, depending on whether or not the deductible is met, if that becomes an issue, but we have to represent both. Yes, you're, you're absolutely right.
Do they have competing interests, the city and the?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Does the city and the individual have competing interests?
Have, I didn't.
Like, one, I mean, I just wonder, how can we approve it for the individual?
Because we, I mean, all our employees are insured through M M R M A, and they have to, because of the conflict of interest, they have to appoint an attorney to represent that individual employee. But it all comes out of the same policy.
Any further questions, comments? All right, seeing no further questions, comments. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move the resolution, prove special outside legal counsel specific to Case Fitzpatrick versus City of Lansing, case number 23-CV-01125, T. Joseph Seward of Seward Henderson, P L L C.
All right, thank you, Councilman. We have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Moving down. Okay, we have a grant acceptance for Michigan National Resources, National Natural Resources Trust Fund, M N R F T F, funds for the Sycamore Creek, Kavanaugh Road, and Waverly Road acquisitions. Brett Koschinski, sorry. I figured you're looking all fancy. I thought you were an attorney for a second.
No, definitely didn't want that.
Good to see you. Being down here, make sure your green button's on.
Absolutely. Okay, so before you is a resolution for a couple of land acquisition grants that we received through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund. And the way the acquisition grants go is they are for the appraised value of the property. So it's really not a negotiation with the owners. We simply have the appraiser go out there, appraise the property. The state of Michigan pays for 75% of that, and the city would pay for 25% of the appraised value. So these were before you, when we went for our last round of grant applications to the D N R. So that was applied for on April 1st here of 2023, and we just received these back that we were awarded, again, the two acquisitions. So I will start with the one for Kavanaugh, 1624 Kavanaugh. This is about, just about one acre. And this property is located just south of Hawk Island. So if you take that City of Lansing parcel viewer map that you have there, you will see it's a, it's a awkward-shaped piece of property. It does have several structures on it. And again, this is right on Kavanaugh, just south of Hawk Island and the entrance to Hawk Island there. So you will see the trail, and if we can go to the next slide there, your next sheet, you'll kind of see a Google Earth picture of this. Couple of things of note here. Number one, this is a better view of the trail, but you will see where it crosses the driveway to the property. So we have a situation there where we have folks crossing and also cars going into and out of this property or to this residence. You will also see the proximity to the Sycamore Creek and then a couple of those ponds right there. This area is in the floodplain. So we have houses here that are in the floodplain, and as you know, that's a effort by our emergency management department and others to, especially for flood insurance reasons, not to have houses in the floodplain there. The next slide, we'll be able to discuss what we are to do. So we're looking to remove those buildings and to restore that landscape there. Again, we talked about the driveway there to remove that as well. So we cannot have, we cannot use the acquisition grant and then have those buildings where they would not be used for a park purpose. So this would be a situation where we would be demolishing those structures there as well. So we must remove the structures. And then this allows for us to potentially do some different things with slope there if we can. It would need to be ADA still to be able, and that's one of the reasons why that hairpin turn is there. The other is obviously for slowing people down before they're coming to the stop there at Kavanaugh. So that is everything we have here in regards to that site. Did you want me just to go on to the other one, or did you want to?
So, so first, very thorough. I had a bunch of questions. You answered pretty much all of them. In terms of the structures that are there, what's the anticipated demo cost? Where do those dollars come from?
So those, those demo costs would be, would not be part of the acquisition grant. So we would need to pay for that. As far as what the costs are, I mean, until we put that out for bid, or I can probably get some estimates on that from planning and neighborhood development, you know, as far as that goes. But yeah, we would need to put that out for bid.
That comes from parks, park operations?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. That's all. I got, I've got a follow-up on that then. So in order to use this grant dollars, do you, you have to have those buildings removed first?
Correct.
Okay.
Or those buildings would have to be used for a park purpose, and I do not see those buildings being used for a park purpose.
Okay, so you can't like, you know, have the permits to remove it and move the process forward to getting the grant, or you have to actually have those buildings completely gone before?
So this would be to just acquire the property. Once we have acquired the property, then we would be able to do what we intend to do with the property. So this is, this is simply an acquisition, you know. And again, the other step on this is we have to agree with the property owner for the appraised price. So once that is finalized, then we can close on this, on this property here.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions or comments on this address on Kavanaugh?
And, and I think what Councilman Garza was getting to is, is, is there a clawback? I mean, we have to prove to the state after we've closed and we've taken possession that we've actually knocked those buildings down, correct? Is that?
Yes. Yes. And this becomes one of the clauses of having a land acquisition grant for park, for parkland, is that it is permanent park property in perpetuity. So this becomes part of, part of that, and, you know, that, that, that is part of the clause there. So yes, there are rules for what can be done with the property.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions or concerns on this Kavanaugh address? Okay, please continue. Mr. Koschinski.
Okay, so the next property is off of Waverly Road, and the map there, I can, I can go over the parcel viewer there. So this is a, currently, there are no structures on this land. This is completely wooded property. Just to take you to that map now, we, we currently have the Lansing River Trail extending up to the east side of Waverly. And this is on a Consumers easement, so you see that Consumers has the easement on the west side of Waverly. The area is owned by Lansing, I want to make sure I get this right here, Lansing Community Christian Church. Excuse me, Lansing Christian Center Church. That is the L C C C that you see there on the west side of Waverly, south of the Consumers Energy Easement. They own the parcel to the north of the easement. Okay, so they are the property owner of everything in the red. Their actual church is south of the easement there. What our goal is, is to be able to extend the Lansing River Trail to the west of Waverly. If you look north of that parcel, you see the large trailer park there as well as some apartments, and being able to connect that population density to the River Trail. Went currently north of here, and, and the entrance to these complexes is off of Jolly Road, west of Waverly. So this is still City of Lansing property. These are still our residents here. We do not have sidewalk on Jolly in this area. And we are looking for not only passage and recreational opportunities for these individuals to be able to enjoy the River Trail, but also for safer passage in this area to be able to connect them in a non-motorized way to the rest of our, rest of our trail system. I mean, really, you would be able to go from this area right here on a, on a non-motorized pathway all, all the way to Lake Lansing. So it's a, you can take this all the way to Dark Container in Mason. So the connection opportunities by, by being able to do this for us are significant. I do want to caution everybody, this is the first step. We still need to agree on the appraised value, and that then we need to get with consumers. We need to find a development grant and money to be able to put the trail across there and then go through this parcel to be able to connect to these individuals there in the, in the different properties, one being the apartment complexes and the other one to the mobile home area. So this is the first step in a long process, but this is an area that we really want to connect to. The next slide, I can just show you is what it currently looks like, which is just simply the trail dead ends. And, you know, we have an opportunity for this to go all the way to Williams Road, which would be outside of our jurisdiction, but would still be able to increase the trail capacity in this area. So we obviously have received permission to put trail on Consumers easement before, and we're confident of taking this all the way through to completion, but this is the first step for it. So pending that, I'm open to any questions.
Mr. Koschinski, do you have any questions from council members? Any comments, concerns? All right, seeing none. Thanks for being here. Do we have a motion, Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, before I move it, I want to say thank you particularly for this last piece. We, folks have, within the administration, within public service, I mean, the list goes on. I think we've been working incredibly hard to make sure that folks over there have walkability, bikeability. There's sidewalks that are being explored at and around, I think, Jolly and Waverly. Just installed sidewalks in front of 3700 South Waverly. This is another piece. So absolutely kind of a dearth of in that area, but I think this helps. That being said, I would move the resolution for a grant acceptance for the Michigan National Resource Trust Fund, funds for the Sycamore, Sycamore Creek Road and Waverly Road acquisitions. Sorry.
All right, we got a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns? Do we have any questions or concerns? All right, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving down, we have discussion action item G, Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board Rules of Procedure. Mr. Chairperson Mohammed Kawi, will you please come down to the well, sir? Good to see you again. Much appreciated. I like your U A W swag you're wearing today. So this is your opportunity to present and then we'll let you get you through your presentation and we'll open it up for any questions or comments afterwards. So make sure your green light's on and proceed whenever you're ready.
Good evening, the board. I guess the question was about the process that the board used. And the process that we used, TAG, which is the advocacy group that we have, drafted the initial procedure rules documented by using other city advisory board rules as procedures as a template. Excuse me. The draft document was submitted to the city D E I leadership team for a review and revision. The board had a few weeks to provide the suggested edits via email and verbally during the next board meeting and then the items were approved. Most of the discussion and debate was around the time for a public comment, which was written in our bylaws. We did make a motion and it was approved by our board to edit those to mimic the three minutes here that you have at city council. And the board approved the documents by unanimous vote and the document was sent to the city assistant attorney for final approval.
Well, thank you very much, sir, for being here. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? All right, I'm not seeing any. So if there are no issues, I could either move to place on file, but I would, I would make a motion to send it back to D E I for further discussion on your approval.
That's your.
I'm sorry, no motion, but yeah.
So, so are you asking, do we think there's value in discharging this to D E I for further discussion and then action, potential action?
Potential action afterwards. Okay, so then I'll move to, to place this back to D E I committee for further discussion. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Okay, that takes the closed session. Vice President Hussein.
All right. Pursuant to M C L 15.268C of the Open Meetings Act, city council will recess in the closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Lansing and Teamsters Local 214 Supervisory and Non Supervisory Units for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, and negotiation of wage reopeners pursuant to the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Lansing and Teamsters 243 Clerical, Technical and Professional Unit and Supervisory Unit effective February 1st, 2024, as requested by the city. It is my understanding that we will have Shelby Freyer joining us in tonight's closed session. So with that said, I would move for closed session.
Okay, we got a proper motion in place. Is there any questions or concerns?
Is that the only person joining?
Outside of, yes, outside of, the folks that are actually here to speak about it, yeah.
Okay, no more questions or concerns. All those in favor, I'm sorry. Missed both, will you please call the rule?
Yep, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Pelley Van Ogle.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
We will be back as soon as we're done to reconvene. Okay, let's, we're going to reconvene committee of the whole now. And we are on discussion action item H, Resolution Ratification of Collective Bargaining Agreement. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so the first, which deals with the Teamsters Local 214, sorry, Supervisory and Non Supervisory Units, includes changes to prior C B A that's covered January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. There is a new piece, a new part-time employee piece with no part-time language, or I'm sorry, this was adopted language from the 243 contract that we inserted, deals with consideration of full-time positions, wages, fringe benefits, bereavement time eligible, making them eligible for deferred compensation plan and the like. Also includes wage rate increases at 3%. And again, sorry, that applies for this year. So with that being said, I would move the resolution that pertains to the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement for the Teamsters Local 214 Supervisory and Non Supervisory Units.
All right, thank you, Councilman Hussein. Vice President Hussein, we have a proper motion. Do we have any questions or concerns, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, next we have Vice President Hussein.
Yep, so this is a resolution that pertains to the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement wage re-opener. This is for Teamsters 243 Clerical, Technical, Professional Unit. Negotiations did include a wage increase for 2024 of 3%. And of course, this is pursuant to a wage re-opener language contained in the existing collective bargaining agreement. So this would cover the period of time from February in totality, I'm sorry, through January 31st, 2025. And I believe I said the wage re-opener that that was a 3%, correct? All right, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we got a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Moving next to Resolution J, Vice President Hussein.
All right, so this resolution actually deals with Teamsters 243 with the Supervisory Unit. Again, negotiations included a wage increase for 2024 of 3%. And this would cover February 1st, 2022 through January 31st, 2025. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Do we have anything else from the body? Anything under other? All right, seeing no further discussion, we are adjourned. See you back at 7:00 P. M. for council.